I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of July 30, 2020, to order a 6 o'clock PM and ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunter?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Attorney Zemanak?
Here.
Village Manager May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone, and this is still considered a hybrid meeting. Village Hall is open for future meetings. If anybody would like to attend, they're more than welcome. But we're also doing it virtual through, so it's a combination of both. And at this point, I asked the manager if we have any public comments?
No, sir, there are none.
And I'll move on to reports. But before we move on to reports, this community lost a great public servant, a great friend, a current trustee, and Jim Addington passed away last week. And what I'd like to do is, before we move on, everybody, all the trustees, I'm going to call upon them to maybe say a few words about Jim, or just anything funny that you want to say, is to remember him. And while we're doing that, I've asked that we have a series of slides or pictures from Jim in his capacities at the, in the community. So I will start out and just start talking, and I'll call upon the other trustees. I think you may have heard me say this before, Jim was probably one of my closest friends in town. Jim was, when Tony and myself moved here in '77, Jim and Kathy were the first ones that really embraced us, welcomed us to the community. His family was always first with Jim. Not only his immediate family, his children, Lisa and Jimmy, his mom and dad, Alan, Marge, and Kathy, they all were involved in this community, and they all were so close to one another. Family, and then second, I believe, was Westmont. Westmont, to Jim, was family. I joined the Lions Club in '80, and at that point, he's already been in there 10 years. He was a 50-year Lion member, and Lions Club probably was his third love. We called him Mr. Lion, the district governor. Jim was just, everything about Westmont was Jim Addington. I had the opportunity to co-chair Pawwa Days with him for a number of years. I assisted with the 75th, which his wife chaired our celebration. And Kathy and Jim, the Addington family, were instrumental and started our taste of Westmont during that 75th celebration. Kathy meant a lot to Jim because family was always first. And his last love, which I had an opportunity to see firsthand while I was coaching Westmont High School basketball, was the boys' basketball program at Westmont High School. During good times and bad times, Jim was there on road trips, on the bus. Jim loved the basketball at the high school. I think we all love Jim. He had over 30 years serving this community, municipal, 20 years as an elected official, and then numerous committees he served on. We're all going to miss him tomorrow at 4:00 to 7:00. Everyone is welcome to Lyons Park. They're going to do a memorial for Jim. So at this point, I'll turn to Clerk Simmski and ask her if she would like to say a few words.
Yes, I would. When I was, well, I was in Lions Club, and I also joined Rotary. And when I became president of the Rotary Club, Jim came to me and said, would Rotary be willing to come and help us with the red, white, and barbecue? And he suggested that we do the carnival section, or the beer, either one. He didn't care. And I said, why don't you come to a meeting with me and have lunch, and we'll talk to them about it. But I'm all for it, Jim. I think it's a very good idea. So he did come. And I know a lot of the Lions were not happy that he invited Rotary into it. I know they weren't. But he insisted, and I said, Jim, I don't want to cause you any, he said, don't worry about it. I think it will be good for all of us if we all could join together and do different things. So Rotary accepted it, and both clubs made money from the carnival. It was a good, it was a good experience. We worked very well together, and I'll always, now I'm going to get teary, but I'll always be grateful to Jim because he cared for both clubs. Ron cares about both clubs. I care about both clubs. It's, but he was really generous with us, and I appreciate that. He'll be important to me always.
Thank you. I think he cared about the entire community.
He did.
Was definitely a mentor for me. I'll turn to Trustee Barry, if he'd like to say a few words.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Jim's the one who I campaigned with and encouraged me to run for trustee originally. He definitely mentored me in this whole political game. And he knew Westmont politics in and out. He knew what streets to campaign on, which to skip. He knew who voted, who didn't. And it was just amazing. And he, and I talked to Jimmy Jr., I've known Lisa, I know Kathy, I've known the whole family from town. And Jimmy said, when he got back involved with the village, running for trustee, it breathed new life into him. And I think we all saw that. And I'm still in shock. I have to talk with Trustee Nero about that. It just seemed like he would always be somehow involved or somehow sitting there or having input and reminding us of the importance of the past, both good and bad. And I've seen a lot of other people post some things social media-wise, and I noticed this pattern. And he used to always end with, you be a good boy. He used to tell me and others. And I think he was genuinely concerned that we were going to get in trouble always. I always will remember that. And I've seen others post that same thing. So, you know, just God bless him and his family in this time, and our prayers, and hope they get through it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Barry. Trustee Barker?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, condolences to the Addington family. You know, it's been seven years sitting across from Jim. And, you know, I always saw him with a guy that loved this community, served this community in so many ways. But I really enjoyed when we would bring in the poster contest winners and the kids and stuff like that. He just, it perked him up. He had a smile from ear to ear. And you can tell, you know, that he had everybody's best interest in mind, the town's best interest in mind. But he loved those children and the successes. And we all know that, you know, those experience for those kids coming to the board meetings or being involved in their community in that way brings them back to love this town. And he was a great example of that, and I'm grateful for that. But I wish his family all the best. I know this is terrible, difficult time, but there's so many people that had a lot of respect and love for him and, you know, hold on to that. So that is all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Barker. And I'm going to turn to someone who probably grew up with Jim around this town and seen him, but Trustee Johannik Guzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I do want to start with my condolences to the Addington family. This has left a big hole in the heart of Westmont. I did know Jim for a very long time, and I want to say that it was great getting to know him, you know, when you're younger and you're, you know, growing up, you really don't know what direction you want to go in. And I am very glad that I chose the direction to go and be involved in the village. And Jim was the first person, he actually appointed me to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I cannot tell you how excited I was to first get started because the Johanniks had been in this village all their life. And I didn't want to be in the fire service, but it was like I wanted to do something. So I will always be grateful to Jim for that. And then, as we all know, I got involved in politics. And I know him and my father had a very special relationship, and that's something I will always treasure are the memories. And he's left a big hole, and I still am at a loss for words with all this. So I do want to wish everybody the best, and thoughts and prayers. And thank you, Jim, because you will be missed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Little?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the most fond memories I have of Jim is that he was a senior statesman, and he was more than willing to share his knowledge of the village, of the red, white, and barbecue, Ty Warner Park, and everything. He even asked me to be a judge at the red, white, and barbecue last year. And it was wonderful to get to ride around in the car with people who told me all the information about Ty Warner Park and how it came to be, and his love of Westmont and Kathy involvement. And it was a real treat for me then. So knowing Jim and having known Jim, it was a real treat for me to come in as the latest trustee and spend some time with him. So he will sorely be missed around town, obviously. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Little. Trustee Nero?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, you know, I echo everybody's comments so far. It's tough to where to begin. You know, it's clear Westmont lost one of our best friends. I lost a personal friend and personal mentor for me. I mean, similar to Harold and Marie, where Jim, you know, and when I ran for county board, was really my right-hand man and partner, not just in Westmont, but all over the county. And, you know, a funny story that I just want to share is Jim had it. And I don't know anybody that's as politically savvy as he was and as nimble as he was. And I remember seeing him at a DuPage Mayor Manager's event, Mayor, when we represented you one time. And he worked that whole room in a matter of 15, 20 minutes. Where I remember telling him, Jim, okay, we get it. Let's sit down and relax a little bit. And he was always business, always had a plan in place. There wasn't, during that time, we probably talked every day. And I really got to understand all the things that Jim was involved with, but it always stuck out. It was never about him. And all these things that we could always talk about, everything that he did, again, it wasn't about him. It was always about how he could help. And you started looking at all the things he's touched. And I was looking back from some photos over the weekend, and all the different events that he and I were at together or happened to be at. It was just, honestly, it's amazing, and the impact he had on our community and really the county. All the former mayors, I had three or four former mayors reaching out, expressing their condolences. He touched people's lives outside of Westmont. I mean, that's the type of impact Jim had. Our meetings aren't going to be the same. I mean, I can already feel that as it is right now today. I mean, it's a sad time. It's unfortunate. But, you know, we did lose a good friend. I lost a mentor. Jim, I learned a lot from you, and you're going to be sorely missed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Nero. I think we all can say much more because he's touched everyone's life in this community, one way or another. And again, I lost a big brother and a part of my family when he passed. We'll move on and give reports, regular reports. I'd like to call upon Chief Riley. COVID-19 has been in the news a lot lately. And I think, Chief, I'd like you to give maybe a little update information about it.
Thank you, Mayor. So as the mayor said, you know, the COVID has really come back. And as we talked many times, that there's going to be an uptick. That's currently happened. In DuPage, we're at 11,151 cases, along with 508 deaths. I think the alarming note there is 404 of those 508 deaths are in long-term care facilities. So that's about 80% death rate out of long-term care facilities. If you remember last week, when I gave you the update that Westmont had 383 cases, we have now spiked up to 403 cases in a week. So we've gone up 20 more. As you heard on the news in the last couple of weeks, the positivity rate was down about 2.1, 2.3, and now we're up to 3.8. So again, my comment to the direction to everybody out there that's listening or at home is, we need to continue to social distance. We need to continue to wear our masks out in the public, out in the restaurants, out into the bars. We need to hopefully, you know, get this uptick back down to where we can continue to remain in Phase 4 and do the right thing. So unless there's any questions, Mayor, that's my report for you this evening.
Thank you, Chief. Clerk Simmski, if you have anything, oh, to announce? Yes, I did. Let me find my sheet. Okay. The garage sales are now permitted, and no permits are required. The community-wide garage sale will be August 7, 8, and 9. No permit is needed. Sign up through the village website. And my little neighbor, I knew they were going to do it, and I stopped her yesterday and said, notify the village that you're going to do a garage sale. So she was pleased to know that. So. Thank you. Trustee Nero?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting will be September 24 at 4:30, and hopefully, we'll all be in Village Hall, but we will see. New Public Works, this building is 77% complete. All garage doors have been installed, and the elevators are going in next week. So more to come on that. A little update on 61st and Richmond Detention Basin, the rehabilitation project, that's going to be starting Monday, August 3, and is expected to be completed by the end of the month, Monday, August 31. So keep out for that if you live in that area. Ogden Avenue Medium Project, that's expected to start this coming Monday as well. And Alley C Project, which is between Norfolk and Naperville, will also begin this Monday. So pay attention out there. A lot of activity this coming week on the streets. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of items tonight. One, the Administration Finance Committee meeting will meet, next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August 13 at 4:30 Village Hall. And then my last comment is sad, but cruising night status is such that we have canceled the August cruise nights. So my heavy heart, I have to give it up and say, that's it for the, for so far this year. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Marie Johannik Guzzo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting is scheduled for August 27, 4:30, hopefully at the Village Hall, fingers crossed. And then the Fire Department Annual Fire Prevention Open House has been canceled this year due to the COVID-19. The Fire Department will be hosting an open house virtually. There will be more information to come on that. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Trustee Barker?
Thank you, Mayor. Good news, I guess, is the Environmental Improvement Committee is going to meet on Monday, August 3. Because it's a small group, we're able to have a meeting in Village Hall at 6:00 PM. And we will social distance and stay safe. We're excited to look at the events that may be able to take place, like pumpkin composting and things in the fall, and bring some activities back in that way. And there's some other topics that we're discussing. Westmont first worked on a Hope for a Day program with the posters. And in conjunction with the stuff that we were doing, the library partnered with us, and they had a presentation by one of the representatives for Hope for the Day. That presentation is available at the library website through August 15, I believe. And if you haven't seen it, it is an excellent talk by one of their members there. And it has to do with, you know, the stress and the strain. And, you know, their slogan is, it's not, it's okay to not be okay. And just the stigma that goes with the depression and the anxiety of people's feelings, and all the way from, you know, having a conversation with a buddy to suicide prevention. But just an excellent short video that, you know, to put it in people's minds to reach out and get help if they need it, talk to a friend. And I can't thank them enough for partnering with us and making that happen. So if you haven't seen it, check that out at the library website. And then, lastly, the census is still ongoing. We're over 70%. And you can easily fill out your census information at census2020, census2020.gov. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Barker. I've asked, I've got Trustee Barry to not only report on his committee, but he's kind of assuming some of Trustee Addington's Community Development Committee Chair. So Trustee Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I promised an August 5 EDC meeting, but it's been canceled. So, but we have been meeting weekly in smaller economic development committee groups. And we're currently working on the Small Business Retail Grant Program. And we want to remind people that the grant program launched on Tuesday, July 7, and it has earmarked $50,000 to provide funds in eligible Westmont businesses that have suffered economic hardship during the COVID-19 pandemic. Awarded grant funds will pay up to 50% of municipal sales tax allocated from the business, up to a maximum award of $2,000 per eligible sales tax location. So what we discussed earlier is possibly changing some of the parameters, and staff is going to look into it because we feel that maybe some of the parameters are too difficult for the businesses to take advantage of. So I know Spencer and his team are going to look into what possible changes, and then bring it back to us at the board if they find some good fits. And then, as the mayor said, I am going to try to fill in for Jim on community development. We did have a special meeting last week. This was to help Nature's Best work through the parking lot issues that they had with our Heritage Tree Program. And we did come to a resolution on that, and they were able to get their parking lot. And our forester, John Yader, was able to come up with a good program to save some trees and also to plant some new. So we look forward to that in the future. And Nature's Best is going to help their customers and their staff to have more parking. So, and then our upcoming cases to be considered at the August PCZ meeting include One North Cass, a variance request to allow a larger garage than village rules, allow at 526 North Park, a variance request to allow a house larger than village rules at 126 Scott Court, and a special use and B1 development permit request to allow an office at 41 North Cass. And that's a business that we're trying to move and retain. And then there's many exciting projects remain under construction. Quincy Station, the groundbreaking, I believe, is next Thursday. LA Fitness is ongoing. The Mystery Grocer is getting very close. The Starbucks anchored multi-tenant building is looking, again, I was by there today, it looks very close to completion. And then the medical office project at 303 West Ogden has gone vertical. And I think it's catching a lot of people's eyes, that you can see it coming over both ways on Ogden now. And the FMC and Auditorium at Ty Warner Park is, we heard last week, I believe, that there's water in the pools. And then the Cass Avenue Dream Homes is also getting ready for their ribbon cutting. It's just a matter of us narrowing down the days. And then, lastly, the shipping container improvement, where we identified these illegal shipping containers around town. We are just one remaining, and its staff is working with them to resolve it. And I believe they have a hearing in front of our hearing officer. And again, that is what I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for taking over that committee for us. Just moving on, does anybody have any items they'd like removed from the small consent agenda? Singin', I'd ask Manager May to please read.
Thank you. Short consent agenda this evening. First item, board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held July 16, 2020, followed by Finance Ordinance Number 6 in the amount of $748,616.56. There's one purchase order tonight, Engineering Enterprises Incorporated, $50,000. This represents the risk and resilience assessment for emergency response planning. And this is disaster planning in regards to the water utility system. It is not identified as an on-hold project, and it is, in fact, a requirement of the EPA. The total of the purchase order with the Finance Ordinance comes to $798,616.56. And that is the entire consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve his read?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second. Any questions? Singin', roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, A Honorary Street Designation. Board to consider a resolution for an honorary street designation. And this is for the James Addington.
Place.
Place. And we're putting it at the intersection where Lyons Park, Lyons Park is Jim's Park. He was instrumental in getting the Lions Club to take that over. And we thought it'd be nice to have that intersection of, is it Chicago and?
Naperville Road and North Wilmette.
Yes, right at that corner. So I need a motion to vote, a motion to declare that intersection as the honorary street designation to James Addington Place.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Barry.
Motion made in second. On the question, I think in front of us, you see a sign similar to the one that's going to go up. It's going to be unveiled this evening and tomorrow during his memorial ceremony at the park. We will call attention to it. So I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business B, franchise agreement with Comcast. Board to consider ordinance approving a franchise agreement between the Village of Westmont and Comcast.
I can cover that.
Manager May.
Well, it is that simple. There already is the franchise agreement for cable TV services, internet services with the Village of Westmont from Comcast. Their franchise agreements are in 10-year blocks. The existing franchise agreement authorized in 2010 is set to expire, and so this agreement just will be again for a 10-year term, and the conditions and fees are in accordance with the previous agreement.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second. Nero.
Motion made in second. Comments?
Yeah, I'd like to ask...
Trustee Barker.
The Manager May. Years ago, they had a condition there that they provided Comcast cable service to government agencies. Is that still part of that agreement, or is that all faded away?
No, it's part of the agreement. It might be in a little bit different form. There's the free institution is what they might be termed, and we do provide a list of where those buildings are, and it's the village buildings, the schools, and the like for this included service. There, you know, maybe the village attorney could address it more specifically, but there's a federal ruling on one part and a local ruling on another one that, you know, is still being debugged, but that pretty much just goes to the quantity of facilities that can be included, or at what point do you have to pay, you know, regular service for that too. But in general, yes, it's included.
Yeah, just to elaborate on that, Comcast is willing to provide service to all government buildings, but under a recent FCC ruling that came out in 2019, they... Any state statute that mandates that that service has to be free to government buildings is no longer valid. So the village would have to pay for service to government buildings. That FCC opinion is being appealed by a number of cities around the country in the Sixth Circuit Federal Court, and if that FCC order is overturned, then the village will be getting free cable. If it's, if the decision's upheld, the village will have to pay for cable.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, intergovernmental agreement. Village of Addison, Westmont Fire Department. Board to consider ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Addison/Addison Consolidated Dispatch Center and the Village of Westmont Fire Department. And I... Manager May.
The, actually, this item and the next item are both related to dispatch services, first one being the Fire Department and the other one being the Police Department. We do, for those that are not aware, the dispatcher, the 911 service, is handled by one of two... What's it called? I forgot what PSAP stands for, something answering point, Public Safety Answering Point.
Public Safety.
And the, and we're with the contract with the Village of Addison to provide those services in a new facility that they recently built and dedicated. The term of that agreement is up. This is a renewal of an existing contract with the terms refined and the, you know, the rates agreed to. And then, just while we're describing it, that is true for the Police Department dispatching as well. This goes through 2023.
And isn't it true the county wanted to consolidate?
Yeah. The, well, the, it was not just the county, it was a state law that required that the amount of PSAP. So before Addison, we were dispatched by the Village of Downers Grove. Before the Village of Downers Grove, we had our own center in the police fire facility at 500 North Cass. And over time, for all good reasons, the total number of PSAPs allowed in your county was limited by, essentially by population. So in DuPage County, there were three permitted when the law was enacted. The Sheriff's Office operated one of them, and then the rest had to do between the other two. There was an existing DUCOM, DuPage Communicator, whatever DUCOM stands for. They were already existing, and Addison was a newly created one. And all communities in DuPage County go through either DUCOM or Addison, and I understand the Sheriff's Office is now looking to further consolidate, and there will only be two PSAPs in DuPage County when done.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agreement?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second.
Barry. Sorry, Linda. Sorry.
Okay.
I have a motion in second. Do we have any questions? If not, I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D, intergovernmental agreement. Village of Addison for the Westmont Police Department. Board to consider ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Addison/Addison Consolidated Dispatch Center and the Village of Westmont Police Department. Again, Manager May, this is the same as the Fire Department?
Same description, just Police Department.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second. Nero.
Motion been made in second. To approve? Any comments?
Yeah, I have a question. This one, maybe Chief Riley is still available, but I remember when we got involved with Addison, that the village insisted that they also cover the Police Department, and I'm wondering how many Police Departments Addison now covers, if you have any handle on that.
I do. They cover seven fire agencies, and they cover eight police agencies. And as Manager May stated, the DuPage County Sheriff will be going into Addison effective December 1. So they'll have a total of nine police and seven fire.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
And it is very, I mean, I learned a lot when they were going through that whole process, but there is a, it's a very different thing dispatching police than it is fire. And they, it is literally two dispatch centers within one building, the way that's all handled. So it is not necessarily a requirement that both your police and fire be at the same place, but it's certainly effective for us.
Any other comments? And we do have a motion in a second? I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Barker. Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little. Motion passes. That's all new business? Miscellaneous. Does anybody have anything they want to comment on? If not, tomorrow, hopefully, we will see people that knew Jim, or even if you didn't, at Lyons Park will be outside. There's plenty of land there to satisfy the state's requirement. So anybody, this is a family-run event, and also the mass tomorrow morning at Holy Trinity, but that's an invitation only due to the 100-people limit. So I hope, well, I'll see everybody tomorrow. I want to thank everybody for participating, and again, this meeting is adjourned. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. I can't just do that. Oh, boy.
Motion to adjourn, Nero.
Second.
Barry.
Well, you two are right there. Motion made in second to adjourn. Roll call, please. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Again, I'd like to thank everybody for attending and also all the comments about Trustee Addington. Again, good night. Thank you.